...of the Board of Commissioners to get to order, please. This time I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Lee.
Good evening, everyone. Would you join me as we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day and the wonderful blessings that you have given us. I ask now that you protect Sampson County from any potential storm that we're facing in the weather and financial and every other way that we could be affected. Thank you so much for the people that have chosen to serve. Thank you for the people that are here. I pray that you would give us your wisdom tonight as we make decisions to best govern our county. In these things, we ask your name. Amen.
Amen.
And would you please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. All right, now we look at the agenda. We've got a walk on for the consent agenda, the EMS clinical internship agreement, and the home and community care block grant. And is there's another walk on, Mr.?
Yes, sir. I guess we would call that, would we call that an action item? We won't have a discussion of the $747,000 that was allocated in the budget for helping employees get to midpoint.
Okay. And where do we want to insert that?
Would we not call that an ac-? I think that's going to end up being an action item. So I guess I would make the consent agenda number five. And number four would be the action item.
Okay. All right. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as a minute.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's pass unanimous. All right. At this time now, we'll, we'll call Mr. Jones up for the DOT update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to come and be with you again. My name is Daniel Jones, serving as the district engineer here in Sampson County for Sampson and Duplin. Since last time we were here, we've made some progress. And I'll go through and share a little bit of that on the construction side of things. And then Mr. Lance Easton will come up and share some maintenance items that they've been taking care of. But since the last time here, we completed the Sampson resourcing contract where we paved 27 miles in Sampson County. We finished that contract June the 13th. We also have completed everything except the final pavement markings on a pavement preservation contract where we preserved 28 miles of routes under that contract. We've got, the contractor mobilized in today for another resourcing contract. Unfortunately, they rained out. And it looks like that will probably be what will happen for the rest of the week. But on that contract, we're going to be paving NC 50 from the Duplin County line to the Wayne County line. We'll be paving King Road from 403 to 701, Lipson Street from Southwest Boulevard to Elizabeth Street, and East and West Morrissey from Warsaw Road to East Elizabeth Street. That date of completion on that contract is 6/27/2025. But again, they mobilized in today. So we're expecting to see, they're planning to start on NC 50 and King Road, and then they'll come into town. For our bridges, we've got the active bridge, bridge on US 701. Contractor now is at 24%. They're working on the onsite detour, driving piles for the detour bridge. We've got the Wrights Bridge, Wrights Bridge Road contract, bridge replacement. And they, they are in the final stages. They've only got left to do their paving. And then we'll be complete with that contract. So they had everything, they're doing, getting their grade work right. And then they'll conduct their paving, and we'll be finished with that contract. We do have a new bridge contract that we just had to pre-con for last week, Bradshaw Road. And it, its date of availability was August 1st, and the date of completion is May 12, 2025. So estimated start date in September for, for that, that contract. We've also got a new Sampson resourcing contract that we haven't had the, the pre-con for yet. But incorporated in that, it's going to, to touch 25 miles of routes in Sampson County. We'll hit US 13, the New Grove Circle, NC 50, Hornet Dunn Highway from I-40 overpassing to Highway 55. We'll hit NC 55, Hornet Dunn Highway from 50 to the county line, Goshen Church Road, Mingo Church Road, Underwood Road, Murphy Road, Mosley Avenue, Roseboro Highway, Dixie Road, Bass Lake Road, Chancy Road, and Bonny Mill Road. And that's all I have at the current, current time. But thank y'all for opportunity to come and be with you.
We appreciate it. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. I hear that street on there, Lisbon Street, you did good. You did good.
It did.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that, Dave. All right. Ms. Turllington, our water system update? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there.
Well, I didn't mean to interject, but got a few things I'd like to share with you.
Thank you.
So we got a storm coming. That's one thing. I want to kind of clear everybody's minds a little bit. Sampson Maintenance is, is ready to go. We're, we prepared today, got a lot of equipment together, got our trucks together, went out and purchased a few more chainsaws. So get those trees out of the road as fast as we can. We're, you know, we're hoping for the best. And as I told somebody walking in, it's kind of in the Lord's hands at, at, at this moment in time. But, you know, we're going to do what we can as it happens. Aside from the, the storm coming, we, we are doing some workout on highways. Y'all might see us, you know, clipping shoulders and doing some ditching. We have about 380 some odd miles planned to do this year, doing that work. But we've currently completed 75 miles of ditching and 30 miles of shoulder cutting. You might see us out doing some, some pipe work, too. All those roads that Daniel called out, we got to go through beforehand and replace some pipes. So we don't have a hole in the road on that, fresh asphalt. So if you see us putting pipes in, more than likely, that route's going to be paved pretty soon. And Daniel hit on a couple, but there's been a few more that were turned in in February. And that process takes some time, can take, you know, 18 months to kind of come to fruition. But two, two good ones to hit on there is we're gonna pave Wildcat Road and NC 41 from Harrells to Bladen. So we're going, we got those scheduled, and, you know, they're coming. Another thing to touch on is three cycles of mowing have been completed in Sampson. There's going to be five total. The, the next cycle should start in the next few weeks. And then the last cycle will be a cleanup cycle. So you'll see us go around and cut a little more, cut the back slope of the ditch, and hopefully do that later in the fall when, you know, the weather turns a little cooler and we can keep the vegetation down over the winter. So last thing, just to touch on that storm again, you might see some high water signs. You might see barricades. We're going to be out getting those up as quick as we can and putting it in our, our system that, you know, alerts people's phones like Google Maps and Apple Maps, so you know not to go there. If that road says closed the next few days, best thing to do is, is turn around and not try and go through it. So as, as people call in, public call in, if y'all call in, we're going to keep a list of roads we close instead of the, you know, the ones that are open. So we can, we'll do our best, and we'll try and get some, get some updates out there to y'all. But if, you know, if anything comes up or y'all find anything, please reach out to Sampson Maintenance and let us know what we can do to help. So that, that's all I've got. But you got any questions for me?
I'll say this, I appreciate the work you've done there on High House. I think it'll pay dividends this weekend. We'll see it for this week.
Well, those, those, those concerns of vegetation are, are important. And that, that was, that was a serious issue when I went and looked at it. So glad to address those things.
I've got one more serious issue I would like for you to go look at.
Yes, sir.
At the end of Phillips Road in Green Path, they're putting in a new subdivision. My trucks go in and out of there, and we make our turns. And they are, it is extremely blind coming out of that subdivision. It's extremely dangerous. And if there's a way you can address it, I would really, really appreciate it because I've had several people in my area who have addressed me with concerns over it. And then I pulled into the subdivision and turned and come back out, and it didn't take me long to realize what, what they were talking about, so.
Yes, sir.
If you can look it up, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I certainly appreciate what you've done in the Ivanhoe and Harrells section. Our ditches are clean, and that's going to really help during this storm and we get all of this rain. And I appreciate the paving of Wildcat and 41. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And I know the residents is going to enjoy the new roads when they come. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You have a question? No, I'm good. All right. All right. Now we'll go to Mr. Turllington. Give us an update on the water system.
Good afternoon. I've come to you today to give you some updates on the water system. The completed water lines we've completed in the last four to eight weeks has been East McCullen Road, Governor Moore Road, Auctioneer Road, Serenity Lake Road, Journey Can Loop Road, Kenan Weeks Road, East Darden, and North Peavine Road. These lines are in the ground and ready to be used. We're just waiting on the state to give us certification and start selling water out of them. Projects that are under construction, the tank at Roseboro and Spivey's Corner is complete, but we cannot use them until we get the booster pump stations up and running. The booster pump station at Spivey's Corner Tank is probably about 50% complete. So hopefully, before long, we'll have it ready to run and can use that tank. The booster pump station at Bonnet's Field, they will start on it as soon as they finish one at Spivey's Corner. Ivanhoe, that's been a hot topic, ongoing issue. On July the 24th, I put out a flower on the county website and Facebook and give Commissioner Lee some of the flowers to hand out. There has been a change since I've, I've handed this out, so I'm going to go through it and let you know. The, what it's going to consist of is 40 miles of water line and one booster pump station. The residents' water service meters and connections will be no-tap fee for customer. It'll be free for them. The engineer status update is the bid design package and submittal for permits was submitted on December the 1st, 2023. We submitted for a encroachment from NC DOT, a permit, driveway permit from NC DOT, a public water supply permit from DEQ, a Division of Water Infrastructure approval from DEQ, an erosion and sediment control permit from DEQ. Now, when I, this flower went out, we had not received the encroachment from DOT or the approval from Division of Water Infrastructure. But last week, we did get the approval from DOT. So the only thing we're waiting on now is DEQ to give us the water infrastructure, to give us permit there. I did call today DEQ, and everyone has looked at it up there. And it has gone to Tim Watkins, who is the Chief Deputy Secretary for DEQ. And he has contacted our engineers with some questions, and they have replied back. So hopefully, if they've answered his questions within a couple of weeks, at the longest, maybe we will, we'll get the approval back anyway. That's what we're hoping for. Once we get the approval back, within 30 days following of the getting the permits, we'll start advertising the project for bids. 30 days after advertisement, we will put the bidding out. We'll open the bidding. 90 days after bid opening, we will come back to y'all and ask y'all to award the contract to the lowest bidder. 30 days after authorization to award, we will execute the contracts, the construction contracts with the chosen contractor. And then after that, we should be able to start to work and get some water lines in the ground. The state has mandated we have this project done no later than December of 2026. Any questions on Ivanhoe?
I don't have any.
I'm certainly glad that you got that information out to the residents because there was concern. They had a lot of concerns that I could not answer. So that's when I reached out to you to do another flyer so that they would have something to look at other than the old flyer because they were going by that old flyer.
Right.
And maybe after receiving that information, they'll know what to look for and when to look for it. Thank you.
We're getting closer.
This project's been a fluid situation. It's, we've been in constant contact with the state and trying to work issues out. And it seems like the goalposts change every time we, we talk.
This is true.
Hopefully, we can get this thing.
This is one of the biggest projects we've ever done, water project. I mean, it's 40 miles long, and we've never put 40 miles in in one contract. So it's been a, a huge project to undertake.
And it's going to be a constant maintenance issue, too.
It is.
It's, it's work in progress right on and on.
It is.
Okay.
New projects that we're starting, the, it, it's in the first stage, which is the surveying stage, is Marion Amos Road, Lakewood School Road, White Woods Road, The Avenue, Bubba Gump Lane. Like I said, it's in the early stage. The first stage is doing the survey, and that's the stage we're in now. And then once we get it surveyed, we'll start asking for permits, approval to put the water line in.
This, this project will, to, to get to fruition, what, what point will it take us to, to get to the, the end of this project? How, what timeframe? What's the guest, estimate?
Yeah, I'm going to say 12 months. I'm going to try to give you the worst-case scenario. But getting the permits back i- is what the real holdup is now. I understand DEQ Water Infrastructure has got 10 people that reviews these, and they've got six vacancies there. So there's really not before people to oversee all of the projects in North Carolina. And that's what's been the holdup, from what I understand. But yeah, I would say 12 months since we're just beginning the process. Hopefully, it won't take that long, but I'm more worse than I said, worst-case scenario.
Okay.
After we get them roads completed, then we will start Clement Area Phase Two. We will not start that until we get these other roads in the ground and ready to sell water. Back before the General Assembly started, we went to the state legislature and asked for some special preparation funds for a Warsaw Road, $3.4 million to be exact. I have not heard nothing back. I don't think they passed a budget this year, so I don't know if that's going to be a holdup or not. But as of today, I've not heard nothing back on if we will get the special preparation funds or not.
Okay.
And that's all I've got. Y'all got any questions?
Any question?
Do the residents from Marion Amos Road and all those roads over in Roseburg, do they know what you just said to us?
Most of them are aware, but once we get it designed and permits, we'll go house to house and do a marketing campaign and let them know, and applications filled out. And we may go there and do a community event like we did back at Lakewood School. And I have them to come out and fill out applications and do the paperwork then. But we will, we will make them very aware before construction starts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turll.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Clark, I think you give us an update on the property upset bid?
Yes. On July 30th, we opened the new bids for our old EMS building. We received two bids, the highest of which was $357,000. We have duly advertised that bid amount. We are requesting bids be sent to the administration building on County Complex Road by 2:00 PM on August the 13th. The next level of qualifying bid, the bid must be at least $374,900. It must be accompanied by a 5% bid deposit. 5% of your bid is the bid deposit.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. I believe we're going to open a public hearing. And Ms. Matthews?
Good evening. We have duly advertised a public hearing to receive comments on the recommendations of the Road Naming Committee with regard to the names of certain private roads. The Road Naming Committee recommends that PBT 419421 be named Riverfront Lane and that PBT 1915821626 be named Tree Line Road. If you have any questions, I can take them at this time.
Anyone have any questions on this at this time? Is anyone in the audience? No one signed up to speak. We'll close the public hearing. I move that we name the road as recommended?
Second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right, we'll open another public hearing for Ms. Oats Mobley. Public transportation for the grant.
Good afternoon. This is for our FY '26 grants. I do need to mention that there is a change in the amount I had transposed to numbers. Correction will be posted in Wednesday's newspaper. So under the 5311 administrative grant, it should be $267,628 in the total project for the three grants, $917,628.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? No one has questions? We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Accept the motion.
I move that we approve the submission of the applications to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
I got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous. Okay. Open another public hearing for planning and zoning.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. At their July 9th Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board addressed the following. We had three rezoning cases that we addressed. And these are two contiguous parcels, so I was just going to kind of combine all of those.
Sure.
Parcel 14051908010, this is 6601 Plainview Highway. It's an 8.44 acre parcel. It's currently zoned industrial. We had a rezoning case, R2401. The request was to rezone 6.87 acres of that parcel that is currently farmed to the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The Residential Agricultural Zoning District aims to protect the agricultural areas of the county, and this proposed rezoning aligns with that goal. Then we have the remaining 1.57 acres of the parcel. It contains a vacant 19,800 square foot commercial warehouse. It's proposed that that area be rezoned to the Commercial Zoning District. Due to the property's frontage on, along the major state highway and access to county water, this proposed rezoning meets the locational criteria required for commercial uses in the residential growth designation of the Sampson County Land Use Plan. Then we have parcel 14051908009. This is addressed 651 Old US 421 Highway. It is .96 acres. That is also currently zoned industrial. The rezoning request for this parcel is to rezone that to residential agricultural. And the Sampson County land use records list a brick, single-family dwelling on the site, which is currently occupied. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the Residential Growth Land Use Designation and the Residential Agricultural Zoning District due to its current use and the surrounding properties being zoned RA. These properties are owned by the Ms. Christine W. Jackson, and these requests were submitted by Attorney Andrew Dickerson. The Planning Board voted unanimously, four to zero, to recommend approval of all three rezoning requests based on the following zoning consistency statement. The Sampson County Land Use, the Sampson County Planning Board finds the proposed rezonings to be consistent with the Residential Growth Land Use Designation and to positively align with the main purpose and intent of such designation. The Sampson County Planning Board finds that the rezoning requests are reasonable and in best public interest and recommends approval to the Sampson County Board of Commissioners. The Sampson County Planning Board finds the proposed rezonings to be consistent with the land use plan.
Okay. Does anyone have a question? Anyone in the audience have any questions?
No questions, but I just want to thank the board. My name's Andrew Dickerson. I'm here on behalf of the applicants. They are actually the heirs of the owner. They now own the property, and we're asking that the board approve our application.
Okay, thank you. All right, here are no more questions. I'll close the public hearing. I move that we rezon the properties as recommended and to adopt the zoning consistency statement.
Second.
You got a second? All in favor? All right, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Caughlin, I walk on?
Yes, sir. To put it clearly, Mr. Chairman, some of us, and namely me, are in error in that we had included in the budget that you approved $747,000, I believe is the correct figure, David, that we had intended or are planning to use to help our employees get to midpoint, which basically shows some recognition of the time and service and the work that people have done. It is, the long story short is what we have actually written is not exactly what we intended. It is considerably more. And so we thought I would let David give you a little bit more explanation and then get direction from the board as to what you would like for us to do.
Okay.
All right. The budget ordinance in Section 12, where it talks about moving people to midpoint, says that anyone who has been in their position for 10 or more years will move to midpoint. Just whatever it takes to get them to midpoint, that's where they'll go. And going back and reviewing that and doing the numbers on that, we have found that that would cost the county not $747,000, but about $1.7 million. Almost about a million more dollars than what we have budgeted. That was not what we intended to do, and not what we calculated to do. Our calculation to come up with the 747 did not include anybody jumping from, jumping straight to midpoint. If you got there, it's just because you happened to get there because you were very, very close to start with it. What we're going to need to do, and it's something we really don't have with us right now, but we're going to have to change the Section 12 of the budget ordinance to include whatever the board would like for us to do. If, if you want us to stay within the $747,000 and be as equitable as we can be while addressing people's time and grade, because some of our calculations did not necessarily address time and grade like they should have. They made our, what we did actually made our compression worse instead of better. Our pay plan helped along, went a long way toward getting it, making it better. Our calculation took a step back, which is not what we intended to do. So we'd like to go back to the drawing board and how to distribute that $747,000. So we'd like to go back to the drawing board and how to distribute that $747,000, um, unless the board wants to allocate more to it, that would be the, but if we wanna stay within 747, you wanna see what that looks like, we can redo those calculations and make the changes to the language in the Budget Ordinance for the board to adopt in September.
Okay. Um, I think initially we set aside $3 million and the pay study took some time and it came in at three, 3 million eight, 3.8 roughly. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The total changes in the budget for, at June 30th or, or for Hoagie would be 3.8, yes.
So, in my opinion, I think we, we need to instruct the staff to, uh, make it work within the confines of what we originally budgeted. An agreement. So I'll, I'll make that motion for, for the staff to go back and, and, uh, rework.
Stay within the 747.
Stay within the 747. Stay within the 747.
Second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, so we'll send that back. So you bring that to us. Okay, we're down to the consent agenda. Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Got a second? First, I kinda got a motion with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's approved. Mr. Caughlin?
Two things. Uh, number one, our new expo director is with us tonight and, uh, I would like for Ms. Atkins to stand up and let everybody see her. I know we have announced it and talked to you, but we wanted her to, uh, uh, meet you and if you want to ask her any questions, we'll be glad to ask her to come forward.
Okay, well, we're certainly happy to have her with us. Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Good luck. If we can help, let us know.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, secondly is, as everybody knows, there is a storm brewing to our south and it's coming our way with lots of wind and water. Uh, the Emergency Management Control Group will be meeting in the morning to start doing preliminary planning for what we might, what we might need to do. So emergency management is trying to keep up and work hard and understand what needs to be done. So it's not something that is being ignored.
Good.
Will we be getting updates as?
Yes.
Conditions change?
Yes, I, I think it's kinda up in the air if it's gonna stall and produce a lot of rain and exactly what's gonna happen, so we'll, we'll stay in touch. All right, uh, this time we're in the public comment section. Ms. Shannon, I think you have something to read into the record.
We, we do have one public comment that came in, um, through email. It says, "Dear Mr. Kivitt, we, the members of the Mingo Grange, wish to express our thanks to the board for their efforts and diligence during the budget discussions. No proposal covering 60,000 people can satisfy or deliver all that's needed and with limited resources, the problem is compounded. We ask for a reduction of the tax rate with no strings or conditions on amounts, simply that it be fair. You delivered and we are thankful for that. Your job as our representatives are difficult and we appreciate that. We look forward to working with the board in a meaningful way for next year's budget process and offer our help in any way possible. Sincerely yours, Patrick Blanchard, President of the Mingo Grange."
Thank you, ma'am. All right, this time we have two people signed up.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my little complaint I have.
Certainly.
Uh, I went to the tax office today because I received my tax bill. Uh, I know that they did another land assessment not too long ago. Supposedly everybody got it in the mail. Well, I didn't receive one that I know of. I was like, that was a letter saying they were gonna charge $80 for landfill a year. But last year I paid taxes in Otterville on my property, which is .4 tenths of an acre with nothing on it, $31. This year, it went up to $152.75. Okay. Uh, the county taxes, last year I paid $56.72. This year it went to 203.13. So, yeah, I think that's a little bit, I can understand maybe 20% increase, but not 71 and 81% increase on my taxes for the property that is just not even the size of this building, or this hallway, I should say. So I need some assistance in that matter if it's possible for to get it.
Okay, we appreciate you coming. Uh, I, I recommend going to the tax office and talking with, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I did that and they told me to come here. Passing the buck. I know how that goes.
We're gonna send you back to him.
Okay, well then I'll tell them you sent me there.
You do that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. I came to this meeting tonight because I hadn't been here for a while and I said, well, I had no intentions of speaking, but I asked what was the subject and she said, well, there's the subjects and I said, well, what deter, who determines the water bill, um, fees and all? She said, well, you do. Because when I got my water bill, I found in it that the delinquent fee had gone, had doubled, not doubled, had gone up one and a half times what the delinquent fee was. And that to me is horrendous. And as I think about it, what about the prep, those people that are below, uh, what we call underprivileged, how, and that are getting county water? How, did you make any concession for them if they should happen to be late paying their fee, their, their bill, that they have to pay that $125? That's, that's going to put them in a debt situation of always being behind. Uh, I can understand you increasing, having an increase, but one and a half times, uh, people's salaries are not increasing one and a half times. Somebody has to say something. What are you gonna do about the people down on the bottom ring or the next ring up on the ladder? Everybody can't afford that $125, the delinquent fee. And I think you should consider making some kind of concessions for those who are at the lower level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunson. All right, that concludes the people signed up. So at this time, take a motion to go in closed session.
I move that we go in a closed session.
Second. Second, all in favor? Okay, we're in closed session.